Thank you all for coming. This is a special session of the Town of Halifax Board of Selectmen for the express purpose of selecting a candidate, or at least interviewing a candidate to begin with, our candidates, to fill a position currently open on the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. This is to fill a current term until this election in May. So the position is basically about a two-month position. And we're very fortunate to have some very good candidates to interview, which is a very good thing for the community. Again, whoever doesn't get selected in this process, please know that it is in fact a two-month appointment to fill an interim term. And I personally, at least, would encourage you to take papers out and run if in fact you are not the successful candidate in this particular endeavor. So having said that, I want to introduce the members from the Silver Lake School Committee. We have Mrs. Paula Hatch, Gordon Andrews, who was also on the Board of Selectmen, but I believe, unless you tell me differently, Gordon, you are acting as a school committee person tonight?
Correct.
On the Board of Selectmen, then, there will be Troy Garen and myself, Tom Millius. And I guess we can begin unless anybody has any comments they'd like to make prior. Well, not hearing that. I believe the agenda post for 7:05 for Jessica DeBona. And is Jessica with us?
I'm here.
Excellent. Would you like to make an opening comment, Jessica?
Um, so I was watching the Silver Lake School Committee meeting when I heard that there was a resignation and a vacancy. And I know that there is a lot of work that has to be undertaken by the school committee in the upcoming months. And I just wanted to lend a hand helping out with that. I know many hands make light work of a big task. So I just wanted to volunteer to help.
Very good. Thank you. Sort of start sort of a questioning process here. If anybody has any questions. Is anybody interested in starting?
Yeah. What do you bring to the table other than just your resume? Why do you feel you should be there?
Well, school is kind of my thing. So I'm a teacher. I've been working as a teacher since 2000. I currently am the reading specialist, grade six through 12. So I work with this middle school, high school population. And school is kind of the most important thing to me. It's a big thing that I care about. I care about my children's education. I care about this town. I'd like to help in any way that I can. And I do think I bring a lot of understanding about school and how that works for a parent and for a teacher and for a community member to the table.
You are a teacher that you may be.
Tom? Oh, I'm sorry. Troy, you speak.
Did you hear something else, Troy? I couldn't hear you.
Do you feel that you will be slanted because you are a teacher as far as going when negotiating contracts?
No, because I'm a parent first. So that's what I care about. I care about mostly this education for my own children and the education of the children in Halifax.
Yes, Paul?
Do you mind if I just ask a question?
Absolutely, please.
First of all, I want to thank all three of you for your interest. As Tom indicated, it's, I'm thrilled to see that kind of interest, especially in the environment that we're in. It's very challenging. It's uncharted territory. It's very different. So thank you, all three of you, for expressing interest. And as Tom indicated, no matter what, I would encourage all three of you to pull papers for the three-year term. Again, tonight, we're talking about a term that's just a truncated couple of months. But if I could ask, Jessica, being a teacher, one of the things that the school committee will be responsible for doing the next couple of months is reviewing, revising, and finalizing a budget to send to town meeting. You have a different experience perhaps with budgets, being a teacher and seeing your school committee or board or whatever developing a budget. Economically, it's very challenging times. Right now, our budget is perhaps the draft budget that we have to review is perhaps higher than it should be, perhaps higher than what we would want to present to town meeting. What are your thoughts on when you have to look at a school budget and decrease it? What thoughts come to your mind? Where would your priorities be maybe as a parent? And then also from a teacher perspective?
Well, I think you have to try to make cuts that are going to affect the least amount of kids as possible. I mean, I know there are certain things in the budget that you can't take out, like the special ed services. And in those things, you can't really, you can't really move. But I think you need to find a way to work with the resources you have, maybe see how teachers can step up in other ways and more ways than one to maybe meet a need that two people were doing before. I was on the school council with Mr. Dupill for the two years when my son was in middle school. So I kind of spent a lot of time with him working through the budget. So I saw kind of that school, the school view impact of how that plays out. And it's tough. It's tough, especially when you're talking about cutting personnel, cutting staff. But it comes down to what do the kids need? And what does the school need to function? So I mean, you have to make the cuts because the town doesn't want any more taxes, doesn't want to, you know, support any more things. And now especially, we're definitely in hard times, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have a question, if nobody else has one, real quick. And this is probably the most unfair question of all. I'm just curious. Paula touched on the budgetary issues, and they're very real. I'm just trying to get a sense of, especially where you're a teacher, how do you feel about school reopening full-time?
I'm ready for school to go back full-time. We actually just had a meeting this afternoon about the return to school for full-time. And I will say that our model that we proposed looks very much like the model that Silver Lake came out with a couple of weeks ago. So I have a feeling they worked based off of your model. But it's time to go back. I think that there are proper safety precautions in place for the teachers and the staff. The administration has done a good job putting things in place, being transparent about what they're doing, being transparent about the cases and the risks. And, you know, it's time to go back. It would have been nice for the teachers to have got vaccinated by now. But, you know, we're moving in the right direction for that too as well. But I think as long as everybody's staying safe, it's time to get the kids back to school.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? I know Troy asked a question. Gordon, do you have anything?
Sure. Thank you very much for volunteering. At this point in time, have you seen the budget issues that the town is facing right now? Silver Lake's assessment along with the elementary school regular day and special needs is, draft budget is $700,000 increase. Prop two and a half is about $450,000. It means that we are going to have to make really hard decisions at Silver Lake and at the elementary school and what kind of education that we're going to deliver. Do you feel, being a teacher? I'm assuming you belong to the MTA. Yep. Do you feel that you're okay with reviewing the budget and understanding that more than likely we're going to have to cut positions?
Yeah, that's the biggest chunk of your budget. I understand that.
Yeah, it's about 80% of the budget is salary and benefits.
Yep. I completely understand that.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody? Jessica, do you have any questions of anyone else?
I do not.
Very good. I think we've covered the pertinent items. And if no one has an objection, I guess we will move on to our next candidate, which is, well, we're a few minutes early, but.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah.
Could we just ask Charlie to check the screen to see if there's anybody else that wants to get in? We haven't checked in a few minutes.
Okay, sure.
Sorry about that. Okay, whoever's coming in has got it in.
Excuse me?
Whoever was in the weighing room has been let in.
Okay, all right. Because I don't see anybody else on my, on my screen. All right, unless anyone else has something else to ask, we'll move on to our next candidate, Summer Schmalling. I see Summer somewhere there, a little dark on my screen, but I think you're there.
I am here. Sorry, maybe the lighting isn't perfect down here, but.
No, no, it's all good. I tried to turn my lighting down. Are you kidding?
Okay, so my name is Summer Schmalling. Many of you know me because I've served on the Halifax Elementary School Committee for about seven years. I was chairman for about almost six of those. I decided to, I've toyed with the idea of running for Silver Lake for some time now. My daughter is a sophomore at the high school. My son is in sixth grade. He's about to enter the middle school next year. So I did pull papers for Silver Lake. I have returned them to the town clerk. So I will be on the ballot for this seat in May. I personally feel like in the time when we are dealing with an enormous budget crisis, as you have all alluded to, prop two and a half is $450,000. Silver Lake is about $262,000. Halifax is coming in at about $440,000. We have an increase in our special needs. And these budgets right now do not include any potential expenditures that may be the result of moving into a different model next year for our children. We don't know what that landscape is going to look like. They also do not include a shared cost budget number right now. So those are things that are seriously being looked at. I am on the admin review committee and Union 31. I have been on them for years. We also have an upcoming superintendent review that, in evaluation for our new superintendent. So I feel that I have an inside perspective on what Dr. Prue has brought to our district over the last year. God bless her for all the work that she's done in this crazy year that we've had. So it's kind of a tricky time of year for somebody to jump into and fill a vacancy on a board. So when I saw there was a vacancy and knew I was going to run for Silver Lake, I thought I would be a valuable asset both to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, bringing my expertise of dealing with the budget and the complexities of trying to return our children to school, and also as a member of the community. And everybody has, you know, who has watched me over the years realizes that I make decisions with, you know, the children in my heart. And I make them while being conscious of the taxpayer in Halifax. And I think a lot of people forget that the taxpayer is really a big part of who we represent on the school committee because we are the largest department in town. And as Gordon alluded to, we have about a $700,000 increase for the schools alone facing Halifax. And I know we are in dire straits in our town right now. So I believe that my, you know, strong understanding of the budget process and all the complexities involved in how that works would be a valuable asset to everybody in the community right now. So here I am, saying hello to them.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone? Paul?
Summer. Tell me a little bit about balancing for this interim period, the responsibilities for the elementary school and Silver Lake because it will be a very busy time, as you know. It will be with, you know, budget discussions and the evaluation of Dr. Prue. So just kind of share with me your thoughts on that.
So I am aware of that. And I am aware that I also, you know, serve on relatively busy subcommittees also. So I understand that that is part of the process. But I feel like I've done a pretty good job over the years, balancing being a parent and being chairman of the Halifax Elementary School Committee and working full-time and many other things that I have done for myself in this community. I currently am looking for a job. So I don't have one at the moment, although I did have a very wonderful interview on Monday. I'm hoping that comes to fruition. But I do also am the kind of person that functions well under high stress. So if I'm not super busy, it's not good for me. So I definitely think that I can manage my time appropriately and give the dedication that's necessary to make the committee functional.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Paul? No. Troy, anything?
I just wondered whether, having been on the school committee, is there any biases you want into this, Summer?
One more time, Troy, is there, being on the school committee, what's that?
Any biases toward teachers or budgets or just now?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think that we've done a fairly decent job of being very supportive of everything that our teachers have needed. I've served on the negotiation subcommittee in Halifax in the past. Although I have to say, you know, no, that's not a fair statement. We've really done a very, given our teachers a lot of support and pretty much have given them everything that they've asked for in regards to everything they've needed to proceed under the COVID umbrella and the hybrid model. We advocated for computers for one-to-one technology ratio in the elementary school. We also, per the request of our administration, got all of our teachers' new laptops so they could provide a more functional platform for the students. So I think we've definitely been very supportive of our teachers. But I have to say, I also do it with a very cognizant mind of the taxpayer because I really understand the, you know, the budget constraints in Halifax. It's difficult. And on a regional committee, it's, you almost have to be a louder voice because Halifax is a different animal than Kingston is, very different. And you really have to be a strong vocal advocate for the taxpayer in Halifax. And in doing that, also being mindful of what our students really need. So no, I don't think it carries a particular bias. And I also am very responsive to our community. Parents reach out to me. And if they reach out to me directly, you know, via email, I'm always very responsive. You're welcome.
Gordon?
So the two different school systems are unique in what they bring for requirements to school committee members. Negotiations at Silver Lake lasted for, Paula, 13 months? 14 months? Something like that? And.
Too long?
Yeah. And they, and they're actually continuing right now because of the MOA. So are you going to have time, if you're selected, to possibly be part of that subcommittee? Because that's an area right now where we have a couple of members with conflicts of time. And I think the balance of membership and activity on those committees needs to be reviewed. So would you have time to step up into a busy subcommittee?
Yes. And I alluded to the fact that I had a job interview on Monday, which I'm hoping goes well. And I made it clear to them that I hold a public office. And it's something that is important to me. And I also made it clear to them that I have children. And so they made it clear to me that the schedule that they will give me is very flexible and it can be shifted around. So I will make time for any commitments that is, it's, this isn't, this is like a crucial time for all of our committees in town right now, all of them. And I understand the whole MOA negotiation thing we went through in Halifax. I imagine it's a little bit more complex being a regional district in Silver Lake because you have different voices from different perspectives. But short answer, yes. Gordon, you didn't ask your favorite question about if we go to town meeting, which I can very strongly say I've been to not only every town meeting, but every special town meeting since I moved to this town 11 years ago.
Going to be my question.
I beat you.
Anything else, Gordon?
No, I'm just looking to recover some nights if other members take over negotiations.
Oh, I see what's going on here.
I figured that one out myself, Gordon. And just so everyone knows, the MOA is the memorandum of agreement that Silver Lake had to negotiate with the teachers' union to cover the nuances outside the contract for what the new responsibilities, new expectations were, teaching under the COVID umbrella, just so everybody's aware of that.
I'm glad you brought that up, Paula, because that, I'm sure, would be very confusing to people who aren't involved in the process. Thank you. Summer, I'm going to just ask you to just state exactly where your position is on going back to school and going back full-time. What are your thoughts on that?
Oh, I've been a very strong and vocal advocate of a full five-day in-person return.
Good.
And in fact, I made the motion on the floor for the elementary to return March 22nd. So that is definitely.
I think for a lot of reasons that that is the direction we should be going in.
I see it in my sophomore. Her mental health is not where it should be.
That's exactly what I was alluding to. There's all types of health issues, and that's one of them.
Yeah, yeah. Most of mental and emotional health for my sophomore. And actually, I see it physically with my sixth grader. I'm like, bro, you're packing on the pounds here, buddy. We got to get you back in the room.
That's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else have a question for Summer?
Well, if no one else has a question, I want to thank you all for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. You volunteered for a lot of things for a lot of years, and we're grateful. We're running a little ahead of schedule. I don't want to interfere with anybody that might want to sign on. But as long as everybody's here, I'd like to probably move on to our other candidate, Marlene Amadie. Did I pronounce that correctly, Marlene?
You did, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can you just give us a little synopsis of your interests?
Well, I am a new resident of Halifax. So I've been in Halifax for about almost three years now. So I'm a mother. I am a social worker. I work for children and family services. And I'm a small business owner as well. So I've been, you know, flooding with the interest of serving as a board member since I've moved here. I did put an application a year ago. So I remember they called me last time for the Halifax Elementary.
That's right, I remember.
That worked. So, but I did put my name for the Silver Lake as well. So when it comes to pull paper, I had my paper. I threw my paper. I intend to return them in the company that comes. So the reason why I want to serve as a board member at Halifax is because I want the budget. Trouble for everyone. I believe my internet is looking. Could you hear me good? Hello? Could you hear me, guys?
Yeah, we will.
Yes, yes.
So I believe that budget for, it's an issue for all city and town in Massachusetts right now because we are having a presented moment right now. Everyone dealing with budget, with shortfall. So it's a very, very tough issue for most districts in Mass. So I want to be part of that conversation to bring a fresh idea, new opinion, and see how I can support that and work with teachers and administrators to see how we can serve our community better. And also, I want the children in Silver Lake to have the same experience that I had. So growing up, when I had school that people generally caring for you and help you through things that you go in, in your families. Many students right now struggling with all kinds of challenges at home. So and those challenges, they are affecting them in school as well. So we want to have people in school to help them, support them to those challenges, especially this onquisitive time during COVID time. We see a lot of mental health. We see a lot of behaviors. So we need a school system that is strong, that have all the resources that they need to support the family, to support the teachers. So I think my idea will bring a new perspective to school. And my background as well will bring new perspective to the school system and help coordinate those services and needs that the children will need.
Thank you, Marlene. Questions? Anyone?
Marlene, what do you feel you bring to the table with your background?
What should we do then again?
What do you think you bring to the table? What you bring to the committee?
I am a social worker. I think that's a big, that's a big thing that I will bring on the table, working with everyone, working with the resources in the community and reach out to the parents, without working with the teachers, administration. I think that's a skill that I have because I've been doing it for a long time right now and bring that social, that social work hat so we can negotiate and deal with this different aspect in the community and in the school as well.
Thank you. Paula, anything?
Yep, actually, I do. Given your background as a social worker, and you've touched upon it just a little bit in your introduction, what, what are you seeing from a social, emotional perspective with the, if you're working with children in your social work field? What, what are you, what are you seeing in a little bit more depth, if you could, with those children? And how do, how do you, how do we deal with it under budget constraints, et cetera? Where, you know, you had mentioned giving the kids everything we can or something like that. How do, how do we deal with the social, emotional well-being of our students when we're, we've got a budget that's contracting a little bit?
So one thing that we can do, if we cannot do any more hiring, we can train teachers and first aid, mental health first aid, train them, give them the skill that they need. They can support the kids at school. So if we cannot bring a hired, more professional to do that kind of services, but we can also, you know, train our teachers to give that support. So it's not going to be a one thing fix-all. But again, it will be a process. I think that's a way to minimizing your budget and working with our budget if we're not seeing increasing the professional in the school and being more, that's will be one way.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Marlene. Gordon?
Thanks, huh? Marlene?
Hi.
So when you've worked with budgets so far, you know, I guess this position is so short, being only basically two months. And we have this major decision coming up basically in less than two weeks. How fast can you come up to speed on budget?
Well, listen, I'm a fast learner. So, and I have the time so to pick up whatever things left undone. So I'm very open to learn very fast-paced. So anything you taught me, again, as a social worker, that's a skill that you need to know. Whenever they put you in a situation that very uncomfortable, you have to adjust yourself. But I think as a skill that I have, adjusting myself to adapt, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Marlene, I'm just going to ask you the same question I've asked the other two candidates in terms of going back to school full-time. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, we must do everything possible to have our children back in the classroom in person. And also following up with the, with the state guide. And also, um, following up with, uh, with the state guideline and prioritize the safety of everyone, teachers, student, and make sure that everyone safe. And our children need to be in the classroom. It is very, um, critical for the, um, for the betterment of our children. They need to be in the classroom, but with safety in place. And, um, I, I, I'm very strong on that. I have a child myself that is, uh, 13, that he needs to be, uh, in-person learning with his teacher, with his friend and to grow because that's how our children grow emotionally and, uh, behaviorally. So they need that, uh, that, uh, human re- uh, connection to, to, to grow. And, uh, but we need to do that safely.
Socialization is as important as anything else.
The big thing, it's a big thing. That's how we learn. That's how we learn.
Yeah, I, I, I totally agree. Does anyone else have any comments? Or questions? Marlene, do you want to add anything?
So far, I just want to thank you for your time. And, um, I, I hope I can be the next, uh, school committee person. So if not, so you're gonna see me on the campaign trail and, uh,
Good.
For the next two or three months.
Very good. At this point, if no one else has any questions or commentary, I'll entertain motions to appoint or motions to put it off to another meeting or whatever the pleasure of the rest of the participants is. Anyone care to, uh, make a motion of any type? I should, I should mention, excuse me, Paul, I should mention that there are only four of us voting, so it's a three-person vote to appoint. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah. I, um, a- again, I, I, I'm, I thank the three of you for stepping forward. And, and again, I know Summer has pulled papers. Jessica, I don't know if you've pulled papers or not. And Marlene, it sounds like you're going to. And what we're talking about tonight is just a two-month interim in a very busy time crunch kind of, uh, couple of months. But the three-year term is a three-year term and I encourage you to pull papers and, and, um, you know, go forward with your interest, um, with the, um, with, uh, joining our committee. Silver Lake has lost three members, counting the Halifax member, in the last 10 months. It's very challenging. Uh, it's extremely rewarding, but we're we're, we're under, um, so the next couple of months, again, teach, uh, the superintendent evaluation and very importantly, the budget. Given those two things being really the crucial two things that the school committee needs to tackle the next two months, I'm gonna make a motion for the appointment for the next two months to, uh, appoint Summer. I do so because of Summer's background and experience already with the budgets in the overall school committee experience. So that's, that's my motion.
Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Summer Schmalling. Am I pronouncing that right, Summer?
No.
Okay, Schmelling?
Schmelling.
Schmelling, okay.
Call me Summer, though.
I've only been mispronouncing it for seven or eight years, but. I wish you would have corrected me, but anyway. So th- this is how this is gonna work so that everybody understands. And as we have a nominee, uh, we have a motion and a second. If Summer were to receive three votes, the voting is over, obviously. And Summer would, uh, have the, uh, appointment. And again, that is, uh, if that were to happen, there was absolutely no reflection on, on the other two candidates. This is, um, a, a challenging time and I understand where Paula, uh, uh, her, her sentiments are. It'd be really tough for anybody to get up to speed in the next two months. Especially with everything we're being challenged by. So anyway, having said that, um, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. I'll start with the school committee first. Paula Hatch, I assume.
Would be a yes.
Would be a yes. Gordon Andrews?
Yes.
Troy Garen on the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Yes, we have now reached three votes. I'm, I'm going to add my vote as a yes also for the reasons I started to enumerate. It was a long time ago, but I served on the regional school committee. Now I'm talking 40 years ago. But it's incredibly challenging to walk into this scenario at this late in the budget process. I'm not saying that the other two candidates wouldn't be capable. Uh, that's certainly not what I'm trying to, uh, suggest. But coming in, knowing where the budgets are, um, having dealt with it this long, I, I think is incredibly important for the next couple of months. And again, uh, I would encourage you both to, uh, you know, run for the position. There is nothing better than new people on boards and people that want to be on boards as opposed to people being drafted to be on a board. You know, I, I can remember dragging friends in to, uh, you know, please serve on the board because we don't have anybody. And that is not what we're looking for. And this is so refreshing to have two candidates that really want to do this. And again, thank you. So I, I guess, uh, it is, uh, a unanimous vote for Summer Schmalling to fill the, uh, unexpired term. And I guess, uh, that is pretty much the rest of the meeting. And I want to thank everybody for their participation, especially the candidates, of course. I, I know it's a frustrating process and, and I just applaud you for coming forward. I, I, and I mean that sincerely. I don't, not just saying that. And please, please follow through. Pull papers, run. Um, there's lots of positions in town. Appointed positions as well. Um, the finance committee, uh, is always in need of people. If you really want to be beaten up, that's the one to be on. But, uh, anyway, I want to thank everybody for their participation. And, uh, we look forward to seeing you all. And if nobody else has anything to add, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, all those opposed? Thankfully unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night all.
Good night.